Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to this regular meeting of the Biloxi City Council on February sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Please rise for the invocation by Mr. Pastor Davis.
Let us pray. God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the opportunity to come before you through all your grace. We thank you for this meeting. We thank you for the city of Biloxi. We pray that everything that's said, done, and thought will bring you glory and edification to the city of Biloxi. We thank you for the citizens and the visitors that come here. Bless this meeting. Bless all our leaders. Continue to get them steady minds to make good decisions. And bless our first responders. Bless all the workers here in Biloxi so that we can be great. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Being that there is no change to the agenda, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as?
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines, all in favor. Unanimous vote. This brings us to the presentation agenda. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome everyone to our February meeting. And just the week before our Mardi Gras and three hundred and twenty-fifth birthday founding of Biloxi is coming up on the same day. And I hope everyone will make a next week's celebration is looking great. And we have Neptune riding Saturday night. Great festivities in Biloxi. And so we're looking, looking forward to the season. And that concludes my report except for asking to remember to spread the expenses of the Biloxi travel or credit card to the minutes.
Okay.
I believe that concludes my report.
And we do have a departmental report today. Thank you, Mayor.
So actually, I'm going to turn it over to our new ambulance service, Patford, Terry Wages with Patford Ambulance. He's going to give a quick rundown of our first week with, with the new service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Just take a few moments just to give you all an update on the first week. We closed out our first official week as of yesterday. And so far, our first thing I want to just give you an update on is our response times and the number of calls in the last seven days. To date, we've responded to three hundred and forty-three emergencies in the city of Biloxi. The last two days of January, as you remember, we took over right there at the end of January. Our average response times for priority one and two calls within the city of Biloxi was eight minutes. From the first of February to date, the same average response time for priority one and two calls has been eight minutes and forty-three seconds. It's been a busy few days. I think busier than what is normally seen here according to the chief. We're working really well with the FD folks on staging and getting resources out appropriately. It's, we're still trending a little bit and making adjustments to the system. That, that will go on for the next month until we have a full month of data that we can work off of. Our support team will be in the city for the next month, just processing through everything we're doing. So the staging and supplies now for, for the fire departments and for Pafford units, we have all that on the ground. We have them all placed out throughout the stations. We do have extra units on, in the city. Now, just still as we work through everything for redundancy and see how everything's going to play out. We met with the Shuckers, ball team management staff about sponsoring some advertisement over there for our company and also providing emergency response resources for the baseball games going on there at the stadium. So we have, we're waiting to get an agreement back, but we have established contact there and looking forward to working with the folks over there. The Mardi Gras preparations are going very well. We've met, I think, a total of three times. Our team has. We'll have resources coming into town over the next few days. Our bus will be arriving in, in town, I believe, Friday morning. UTVs and extra personnel to stage up for the Mardi Gras festivities. Also, orientation, I know you ask that question a lot. Currently, we went through two orientations. We're in the middle of the second one. We've orientated approximately sixty people that we've hired into the company through, to work the ambulances here. Thanks to Greg Stewart and the Lodge and Leader Support Services, providing room for us to do that out at their facility. It's really helped out a lot. A big auditorium there that we can use to process through. Our orientation period takes about four days to go through all of it, this uniforms, protocols, and all our procedures and working here and how the system's going to work. Now, that is a really brief summary, but the most important thing I want to emphasize, and I saved this to last. Out of the three hundred and forty-three calls that we've been responding to over the last seven days, there's been no exceptions taken. So that is the average response times without any exceptions being applied to any of those calls. So that's just very important that we, we emphasize that because that, that is quite a good system there. Any questions that I can answer?
Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
How many ambulances did you have on, in service?
Currently, right now, we're running five active ALS ambulances, and we're also running one to two BLS trucks on doing non-emergency transfers. We have twelve ambulances in the city that we can utilize. We have called up for support, I know of twice where we went into what I call zero status on the five. That is part of our trending process. It were evaluating on actually how many trucks will be required to sustain the system over a period of time. So that was the reason we had these extra trucks here. Currently, according to the chief and, and, and as we talked through, it's been unusually busy. So again, we're going to take the trending numbers over the next month and see if that sustains an average. And then we'll best be able to tell how many trucks it will take to meet our response time criteria.
We had the Mardi Gras parade like Neptune's Saturday night. Mardi Gras, if it's the great weather, you allow that to have seven, eighty thousand people. How are you going to locate your ambulances with that many people? We have so many dead ends. It might be that flow and traffic so easy.
We'll have our, our instant command people coming in this week. Retired firefighter Carl Kibbe is going to be our instant commander. He'll be located in our command post with the police and fire department to manage the parade. We've staged UTVs, side by sides. We have, I think we have three of those that are going to be staged throughout the parade route, maybe four. We're waiting to see if that other one gets delivered. We'll also have extra ambulances staging where it doesn't affect the call volume or the call response out in the regular areas.
We've had a number of meetings with, with them regarding the inside and outside the parade route and routes to Merritt and some of those. It's been, it's been extraordinary. I think the plan is, you know, to get the most, you know, to where it needs to be. And let me just kind of add, I don't think, has there been any surprises from your end? It's been smooth from our end. I don't know if, you know.
Well, the, really, the biggest surprise we have gotten so far is the number of calls that is coming in. It, like I said, it's been unusually busy. We anticipated approximately thirty to forty calls a day. I think last Friday, we had sixty-eight in one day. So it has really been busy. We, we don't know why. We tried to figure, but it's just the way the system works. That's why trending our system and evaluating it over a period of time is so important. Because we, we, like I was telling you when we were starting this, we agreed to five trucks in the system. But right, if we keep this same trend, we're going to need that six truck. It's just a fact. And we'll, we'll put that truck up.
Good deal.
So.
Yeah, good deal. Thank you. Good.
Any other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you. No more departmental reports. We'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I got a, somebody sent me a lot on Miami spring break. And I sent that to everybody. I think y'all, they sent it through all the email. You know, they're looking at some ways to shut it down, you know, because it's getting too bad. So it's something like we have to look at. So I figured, more information you get somewhere else, they're going through the same thing we're going through. At least it gives you different ideas to look at. So that was the first, anytime I get another one, I'll send you all, I don't know, Kenny Carter, he probably could pull this stuff off because you got connections all over the place. And it's probably more detailed than what the thing I sent you all. So I think that was just a good thing to pay attention to right now. And I got a legal question for Peter. Last week, we had a zoning change. And this state statute says you have to have a public need, then show no public need. And you have to have a mistake in the zone. There were no mistakes in the zone. Well, it passed. So can you pass something voting against the state statute? And if it is, is it actually in effect or it's not in effect? I'm just looking for a legal answer to make sure what we're doing is the right thing to do. And according to the state statute, we didn't do it right. So.
If it passed, then it's in effect.
So voting against the state doesn't mean anything. I mean, the state law, we supposed to take an oath to protect the state law. But we just voted against them. So that's what I'm saying. So something, something got to be set right. Either you can do it or you can't do it. But I mean, we supposed to protect the laws. So I'm just trying to find out, I don't know, get a legal answer. Something, I'm just looking our way. Yeah, it passed because it passed forty-two.
You, you asked if it took effect, and, and I answered, yes, it takes effect because it passed.
So is there any consequences for voting against the state laws?
Well, that's an assumption of whether or not it, you know, you're making an assumption whether or not something's against the state law or not. And.
Not an assumption, Peter.
Well, I don't know what, I don't know which one you're talking, I don't, I don't have the transcript of what happened or what the reasons were. But.
No, no, the state law states you have to have a public need. You have to show that. There were no, there were no shown public need. You had to have, either the state statute. And you had to have a mistake in the original zone. It wasn't a mistake.
I guess the majority felt there was a, there was a need.
Yeah. What I'm just saying is that's the state law. That's all I'm trying to do is get that straight. So, you know, if you got to read a little further, pull it up on your phone or something, I don't know. But I mean, it looks like it's hard for us to vote against something we took an oath to protect. And then it passes. That's all I'm trying to get straight.
Okay.
Thank you. Just asking you that question.
You done?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Guines?
Okay, I just wanted to touch on Pafford. They came, they came out and gave a report. And I think I called both the chiefs about seeing the paramedic service in the community. So I thought that was great. We've been having a lot of no-shows when they were calling, and it's a blessing to see them all out in the community. So kudos to you guys for making that decision. Mardi Gras parades that went on earlier last week commend the police and fire department for, and first responders, all the first responders for monitoring those parades. Kudos to the mayor. Met with the IP regarding the, the parking lot. That was a great productive meeting. And it's finally, finally, we're able to see a resolution, a possible resolution for that. And the last thing I have is for Mr. Mike Leonard. I want to kind of get an update of the street sweeper. I've had a few people call me about the street sweeper making it through the community. So if we can just kind of get an update on that and when they're, when they're coming through.
I'll get you the schedule tomorrow. The, the schedule changes every month.
Okay, right.
On, on the routes that they're sweeping. Now, you recall, you know, a lot of people don't realize they sweep at night.
Yes.
So they think people don't see them. But I'll get you the schedule. And if you want to amend the schedule, let us know.
Yeah, and I know they're contracted out and they sweep at night. So we just want to kind of get an idea. So when it come through, I can give the residents a heads up when they're coming through. And, and last, Chief, I'll just be checking with your light on this week regarding the issue we talked about earlier. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Demme?
I didn't see, is Mr. Bell here?
Jamie's here.
Jamie's here, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Lee, can you give me any update on what's going on with the fields, the Pops Ferry fields? I know there were bids that were supposed to be back in. Where we in that process? Mike, you may know that as well, Mr. Leonard.
Right. Um, as of right now, no plans for the Pops Ferry fields, just due to the fact of the magnitude of the complex. We have a lot of issues going on out there that we have to fix, that we're looking at trying to do. We do have plans in the future for the Pops Ferry fields. Possibly maybe looking at lighting up the international field to give a place for, for people to, to utilize at night.
I want to update too on, on some of the, the tennis court lights that were used to replenish the eighty, eighty-six or so lights across all fields, not that. But, you know, we've had a couple of good productive meetings with, with Parks and Rec and Sherri and Ronnie and Jamie. But we've got, we've got some pricing on what it's going to take to pull them down and replace them and that sort of thing. So, but the international field as far as lighting, I think we're going to move forward with the, the LED there. And then use the, what's coming from the tennis courts at AJ Holloway Tennis Courts to, to get, I think we have about eighty-six of them that we can use. So we'll be replenishing that.
So are you saying that we're going to be moving lights from the AJ Park over to the Pops Ferry Park?
From the tennis court, we're going to be utilizing other places so we can, you know. It'd be, it was about forty thousand dollars worth of labor related to get it, so we can put it back up.
Just, just being able, because, you know, those, those lights that are at the tennis courts, they're not really the correct lights for tennis. But they can be utilized in other areas of the city to provide light on athletic fields.
Okay.
So that's what, you know, we're looking at different options of taking, taking what we can remove that is still working in good working condition and putting them at those different locations and trying to get some lights in those areas.
Councilman, one of the things that I think is, that council needs to hear is that due to the weather delays for the Holloway Sports Complex work, it's apparent that that complex is not going to be ready this season to host baseball and softball. So the Parks and Rec Department is scrambling right now to try and figure out how to piece together a series of fields that would allow us to at least have a, a season without, without having to cancel the season.
Yeah, like I said, I think, you know, we were concerned about the readiness of the field to take the, the battering. And I think that's, you know, wise. And, you know, we'll tap dance to make these other fields usable and, and implement that.
So what is the status of the fields on Pops Ferry then, as, as far as usability?
As far as usability, we're, biggest problem that we had with some of the fields is not knowing who was going out there and damaging the fields. So we've had, we've, we've been trying to spread the word that, look, contact us. We'll give you access to the fields as long as we know who's going out there. We've had quite a few people scheduled with us, and we've opened it for them to go out there and use it, of course, during daylight hours at this time.
Okay. Do you have, do you have any knowledge or information regarding the dog park? I know Ms. Bell was looking at using some of the funding to improve some of the amenities at the dog park. Are you?
I believe she's still working on getting the prices and the quotes for that.
The shade structure, I think, is what, we, we talked about the last week there, yeah.
Say that again?
At the, at the dog park, we're looking at the campus, say, some, some of it was at, uh, uh, the Miramar Park, I think.
Like the, the shade?
The shade structure.
Right, right. We need the shade structure.
Shade structure and different things like that. Yes, sir.
All right. I will, I appreciate you being here. You're not Ms. Bell, and I've talked with Ms. Bell directly. So I'll get a, I'll take what you say for its word, but I'm going to contact Ms. Bell tomorrow and see if I can get some more precise information. That's all I have.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, several things. First is community court. I attend community court occasionally. And it, it's making a difference, and they've gotten very efficient in dealing with local property owners. However, I'm told there are legal limitations to the current process where the court cannot take action if it involves some types of businesses, LLCs, corporations, some life estates, and owners residing outside the city limits. So maybe we can, maybe the legal department could look at revising that to, to help us. Yeah. Make a difference with, with some of those entities or those folks or owners that I just mentioned.
Well, for example, Southwind Apartments, which is on Irish Hill.
Yeah.
Uh, basically refusing to pick up the residents' trash. And they're owned by some company with a service agent in New York and the different northern states. And, I mean, our solution to that was just to go directly to Chancery Court to get an injunction against them. And we've served them, and we've got a hearing date on that within a, a week or so. So in, in a really egregious example like that, that's what we're doing right now. Just, just moving forward because you can't have people paying rent and not being able to have their trash taken out.
Right. Well, in, in my ward on Walmart Lane and Beach Boulevard, there's the old Broadway Inn. And I think, I think community development, you've done all you can do at this point, I think. But I, I don't know.
Well, that, that was, when I saw the emails on that, we started getting the paperwork prepared on that when we get the word to, to go forward. But I think it's still in the process.
City Council, City Council has passed a resolution on that property. So we're in the process of getting the contractor to clean it up. But we're aware that there are certain entities that can't go to community court. And most of those are the ones that are brought before, or some of those are the ones that are brought before the city council for a resolution. You know, we'll, if we have a non-resident owner or something like that, and we can't satisfy it through the community court, then we'll just bring it to the council, get a resolution. We'll go clean it up and add the charges back to the taxes on the property.
Right.
Now, there are unique circumstances sometimes, like the one that Mr. Abide brought up, where, you know, somebody just stops paying for their garbage pickup at an apartment complex. And see, with something like that, there's no real remedy at the council level for, for you to pass anything that would help that kind of a situation. So he's following the right protocol. And we, and we do have some others that we get that we have to make a judgment call on it. Well, if we take this to the council, what are they going to do? You know, it's not something they can do. Typically, what comes to you, of course, is cleanup, demolition, those kind of things.
Right. Well, in this case, the Broadway Inn, it's, it's, it was secured at one point briefly, and it was unsecured. And I know, Jerry, you, you and I have discussed this a lot, but it's just, this has gone on for six, seven, eight months, almost a year, I guess, off and on. I mean, the gentleman who purchased the property was going to make some great strides, and for whatever reason, that didn't materialize. But everybody that drives past that and the neighbors that have to view all this are wondering, why is this still unsecured? Why is there an attractive nuisance in a pool that hadn't been cleaned up? There's no security on site. There was at one point. And I'm, and I'm not knocking the community development folks. It's just, what kind of leverage do we have with this owner to get him to act? We've, you know, not pushed the right buttons for the past number of months. And everybody that, that has to look at, at this structure is just, you know, getting irritated. That's, that's not why they live at that end of town.
And, and one of the reasons for the delay is that any time that we're going to, excuse me, that we're going to secure a structure of that size or we're going to demolish a structure, we don't handle it in our department like we do the, the typical cleanups or whatever. Those have to go through Keith Stewart. He has to advertise because of the amount of money that's going to be involved in securing that building because it's going to take a lot of money to, to secure that.
Is this one of those instances where you could move this case to circuit court?
Uh, well, it'd be Chancery Court, but.
Or Chancery Court.
If it gets to that extreme or, but I, I thought it was in the process of being bid, is it not?
It is, yes.
Has it, have the bids been published already or?
Yeah, after we got the resolution, then we turned it over to Keith, and he puts out for bids to secure the building. So.
So the time to ward would be what?
We're just waiting on him. He usually does thirty days.
So how many more days? I'm just calculating the time of, of going through court is going to be a forty-five day period.
We should be very close. I don't have a specific date, but we should be very close.
Okay.
Well, anything we can do to expedite it would be greatly appreciated, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Creel. Next thing, I don't know about the other council members, but I'm still receiving comments about the quality of the sound for folks usually who either are watching this livestreamed or maybe looking at the recordings later, I don't know. Just tossing that out there, but we still seem to have some issues apparently. Of course, I hear myself terrifically, as you know, at these council meetings, and we all hear each other. But if you're at home, sometimes it's not that, I guess. Hopefully, okay. The next thing is the tree committee. I know we have a member from each ward. And I know that we have, I understand we have a number of vacancies. I don't know how many. Three or four, I'm told, but we need to fill those if we can. I don't know how long those have been vacant.
You should respond by that by the next meeting.
Right. Any word on Dunaway Glass and the Hurricane Katrina display case on the town green? I know, I know you have to schedule with them well ahead, so I was just checking on that. Okay. This, this last thing, I, I try to attend planning commission meetings. And this past, on February first, there was an item on the agenda, actually was a tree hearing, about protected trees on a townhome development on DeBee's Road. And I think when the transcripts are available, it will reflect that we need better monitoring. We need to have accurate tree surveys. We need to have good enforcement. We need to revise our mitigation requirements, which I think will be apparent or insufficient in this case. We need to have some more meaningful consequences associated with damaging or destroying these trees. Otherwise, there, there's little or no deterrents for the developers or the subcontractors to comply with our regulations. The tree hearing was continued to the next planning commission meeting, which is Thursday, February fifteenth. And it, it should be interesting. The commission discussed this for about maybe sixty or seventy-five minutes on February first. I think WLLOX did a segment on that here just in the last night or two. But it's, uh, it's just, we need to do a better job of protecting these trees. And I think this may be a good opportunity for the city to show that we mean business when it comes to the remedy, whatever's going to be decided for this developer or subcontractor really, who, who didn't do what they were supposed to do. So that's all. That's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Mr. Gladwin?
Thank you, Madam President. I got a lot to unpack. I'll try to get through it as quickly as I can. First up, Crew in Neptune held their ball. It's one of the Super Crews. The mayor and the first lady was in attendance. Over nineteen hundred people attended that ball at the Coliseum. It's, it's actually nearly five hundred members. It's the largest men's organization on the coast, and they're proud of that. They'll segue into this weekend to a spectacular night parade. And then Big Carnival will finish up Tuesday with the granddaddy crew of them all, and, and we'll finish out carnival season. Next, Junior Leadership Gulf Coast. Today, we met in these chambers at four fifteen with a group of ninth graders. And it's just enlightening to see them actually open up and ask questions of the mayor. And Dr. Tisdale was attending along with myself. They got to learn a little bit about the history, and they got a little bit of glimpse and insight with their questions on how does the government, local government work for them. So that was fun. I commend the chamber for hosting that. I too have questions on baseball. You, you mentioned that we, we've lost this season as far as playing on these fields, but we've chosen alternative fields to be able to play league ball. When exactly do we anticipate those turf fields to be ready for play? Is there a projected date in the future that we can reasonably project and say it'll at least be finished by this date? Or how is that going?
Unfortunately, I mean, we had wonderful weather during the fall months, and then it, you know, it went where it went. And where that complex was originally built on, you know, when you get down so far, it's just, the underlaying is just really, really bad. I mean, they've, they've been out there having to dig holes to pump water out. And so I guess to answer your question, councilmen, they're just.
guess to answer your question, councilman, they're just, there really isn't a timeframe that we feel comfortable to give anybody.
Next year? Will it be open by next year?
Uh, yes, sir. I would, I would, I would think so. Um, and due to the process, you know, with it only being semi-turf, once the turf is laid, then they have to come put fill dirt and then sod in behind that turf. So, then that new sod has got to take root six to eight weeks minimum for that sod to really dig in and fixate itself. And every, everybody that we've talked to that has done this process, one of the biggest things they keep telling us is, whatever you do, don't rush opening your fields or you're gonna be replacing sod again.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with that. I'm just trying, as people ask that we not be able to play baseball, I'm trying to say, well, we're working through these issues, we're taking our time to get it right. Right now, we, we feel comfortable to be open next season. If we get a, a date earlier than that, we'll let you know.
And, you know, we're telling people to check back, you know, we're telling them every month to check back, but I mean, I think a, a good goal for us would maybe be June or July.
Okay.
Unfortunately, though, that is after the youth rec season, which ends in May.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Two more baseball comments I wanna make. This, this is actually in Felix's ward, but I, I just wanna mention the Biloxi Bombers, uh, in conjunction with the, uh, Biloxi High School coaches, uh, put on a clinic, uh, for a bunch of kids, uh, youth kids, and it was great success. I've seen the social media pictures. I didn't have time to get by there, I was inundated with some other stuff, but it looked great to see those kids and coaches kinda interacting. Uh, so I think the future of baseball is bright, uh, for Biloxi. And then finally, I, I had a conversation, but I just wanna, uh, make sure it's on the record. Um, Biloxi, uh, High School, the, the Diamond Club is, uh, doing their last fundraiser. It's a Super Bowl bash. They had put a deposit down to, uh, in anticipating renting one of our, uh, meeting places and they're just asking, because of, uh, unforeseen events, they had to cancel, can they apply that deposit, uh, to next year? And we can keep that two hundred and fifty dollar deposit and they just wanted it to roll over for a deposit next year. I just wanna make sure that's appropriate. And I think I'm getting a nod, yes. Okay, um, I wanna touch on spring break like, um, my counterpart, uh, Councilman Lawrence did. You know, are we doing enough? I've read the articles that, uh, Mr. Lawrence is alluding to and you got other cities that, uh, because of last year, they're actually going public and saying, we're shutting this thing down. They're putting in curfews, they're, uh, limiting access to the beach, uh, they're doubling their parking fees, uh, but they're being proactive like other cities that we s- we have read about recently that is just having problems controlling it. So, um, I just wanna make sure it's only a little bit over sixty days away, we're gonna be on top of our spring break. And I've hoped we got the right message out, uh, to people that wanna come and enjoy the Mississippi Gulf Coast. We do welcome them with open arms, um, but those who wanna come here and cause trouble, we, we do not welcome that. And I, I just wanna make that statement today and I, I hope we're achieved that we're comfortable with where we're heading in, in sixty days.
I think we're more comfortable now than we've ever been before. We have, these ordinances are in place, I know that they're gonna help us. Uh, we do have an upcoming meeting with, with, uh, one promoter, uh, so far and, uh, we'll see how that goes. There's gonna be, uh, a lot that promoter's gonna need to do.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that statement.
I'll follow up.
Sure, absolutely.
And I've received some emails, I think they were addressed to everybody, about some promoters that wanted to try to organize this spring break event that goes on. Is that who you're talking about?
I, I'm not sure if it's the same promoters or not.
How, how big is the event that this guy is talking about? Is it, is it considerable or is it just a small thing somewhere?
Well, I mean, it always starts small, you know, so this'll be a beach event, uh, if it takes place. And I would expect a few thousand people for that.
Okay.
And I, I wish I could tell you, I wish I could be more definite for you.
No, I was just, you were just here, it just came up. Um, I'll look through those emails and see if I can find some and forward them to you because there were people that, when we talked about finding someone to organize this and have someone that's accountable, there were a few names that, that, uh, popped into my inboxes and a couple of people that approached me at these meetings and I just didn't know if you had communicated with any of them or if they had actually followed up with, with that settlement.
Yeah, if you can send those, maybe who we're talking to now, I'm, I don't know.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Um, next, uh, I just want, um, on my report, talk about there's an item, uh, Resolution B on the agenda today and that item is to deny a zoning ma- ma- map amendment. Uh, it's, it was a plan to change an ordinance proposal, um, uh, that, that the planning commission looked at and they debated it and, uh, they actually denied it. So, just as they approve, uh, measures and it comes before us, when they deny it something, it comes before us too. What I'm, uh, going to do when it comes up on the agenda today, I'm gonna make a recommendation that we actually change this to an ordinance and do a first reading and I've asked, uh, Director Creel if he would just show the area that we're questioning. Uh, what, what I'm proposing to do, once this gets through the process, is to change, uh, the existing zoning to agricultural restricted, uh, which basically you can put a nature park and you can put one resident per five acres. And then, uh, the higher land, what I'm proposing is that we, uh, do limited business. This is the area up on Highway sixty-seven, uh, that was a little controversial. I have been talking to the residents, several of the residents that are more comfortable with this. I think it protects them from some development that they don't wanna see, uh, versus, uh, potential development that may fit this area more appropriately. Um, so Director, are you, can you show those, uh, slides briefly? Yeah, yeah, ever so briefly, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the liberty to be able to use a little, a few minutes.
Okay, uh, this is a property that's on Old Highway sixty-seven and, uh, you can see the, the bowl lines represent the area that we, uh, advertised for a zoning change. Now, one of the reasons that this, what initiated this was that, uh, there'd been a couple of zoning changes on this stretch that the neighbors were really concerned about because they did not wanna see this property redevelop as a, uh, intense business or industrial zone again. So, I had a conversation with Councilman Glavine about it and because the property's zoned agricultural, the city can actually determine what direction they'd like to see this zoning go, you know, how they'd like to see it develop. And on the, uh, west end of the property in question, you know, we had had the Cedar Crescent subdivision that had developed. We also had the new fire station down there, we've had some other development down there. So, we wanted to try to keep it something that was very compatible with, uh, residential zoning, which is what we expected that this would, would go. Now, one of the, one of the things I wanna point out is that we advertised all of this property to go to neighborhood business and we did that for a reason. Neighborhood business, of course, is the zoning, uh, that is kind of expected to be next to, um, new single-family subdivisions, which is what we felt like some of these, uh, rear properties and southern properties would turn into. But we also advertised it as NB because by advertising it as a little bit more intense than the LB, it gives the planning commission and the council the right to reduce the request, reduce the intensity of their request if they feel that that intensity is gonna be too much for what's there. So, this is what is existing and, uh, when it went before the planning commission a year ago, uh, there were some neighbors that came out that were concerned about, uh, the drainage in the area, especially on the east end because the east end of these properties is essentially, uh, retention ponds. I mean, you can drive up there and look at the property, there's standing water ponds up there right now. So, if we could go to the second slide. This is the current zoning and you can see that all of the white areas that we were just looking at are zoned agricultural right now, but in the middle, the two large red areas is where, uh, previous landowners had requested RB zoning, which is the most intensive business zoning that we have short of waterfront. And it opens the door for a lot of undesirable uses in this area that the neighbors were really concerned about. So, by looking at a less intensive zoning through there, it would kind of, uh, head this off.
I, I wanna point this out. So, right now, Halid Zone, right now, anybody can ask for conditional use and turn those, uh, property parcels red. Uh, one of the red properties up there came before the council in a hearing and we have, uh, basically, he got his, uh, approval for conditional use and he didn't do what he said he was going to do. And he just created a lay-down yard. So, with going to limited business, we're trying to prevent any of these other properties turning into the same thing.
That's correct.
And that, that's why I'm proposing, or we're, we're proposing this.
And also to make sure that, uh, any future zoning change request up there, that they can't use these as their argument that, well, wait a minute, you know, y'all changed the zoning there, why can't you change the zoning next door? So, what we proposed was the neighborhood business and if, if you'll go to the next. I'm not sure you can see these lines on here, but what we tried to do with this one, and the next slide will be much clearer, what we tried to do with this is to show what is underlying on that property.
You really can't? Go, go to the next slide.
Can't tell.
Go to the next slide.
Go ahead, Kerry. Okay, this is what we're proposing. This is what we, uh, hope that the council will consider changing to. The light green area that you see, the lightest color green, those are essentially all retention ponds. There is heavy drainage through there. That's properties that we feel would not be suitable for development in the condition that they're in. And the most restrictive business zone that we have is LB. The most restrictive agricultural zone that we have, which is technically a residential zone, is AR. Now, AR is usually reserved for the islands or marsh areas or in this case, these heavy wetland areas, you know, where it would really create a problem if we did it. So, what we were recommending is that the light green areas, which are agricultural now, would be changed to AR, which means that, uh, you would not be able to develop on there except for certain things that work well within a, a very wet area. The two darker green areas, right now, are zoned agricultural and we're not proposing that those two would be changed, that they would be left as they are. So, there'd be no change to those. Uh, agricultural, again, is very strict. It, uh, it doesn't allow, uh, it, it allows one single-family house own per lot if they meet the one acre minimum criteria, but it doesn't allow, uh, certain types of businesses or anything like that. And then the, uh, light pink area on the west end, that would be the limited business. And limited business is what we used to call professional business. So, it's limited to things like, uh, uh, professional offices, some medical, those kind of things that would be allowed in those areas. So, what we would hope that the council would consider is changing the zoning on that west end where we have the pink to limited business, leave the dark green areas the way that they are, which are agricultural, and changing the other properties that are essentially the drainage properties to agricultural restricted, which would very, very limit what can go on there.
I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Creel, could you point out where Paradise Lane is? I think it's north of Old sixty-seven. Is that the, basically, the border between the light and dark green right there? And where's Jake Hustley? It's gonna be-
Joe Hustley.
Joe Hustley, okay.
It actually comes in my idea.
Okay.
While we grew that land there.
Gotcha.
On the night of President's interview, Joe Hustley was the power in line and we respected that. I've talked with, I see you've utilized direct vision and you've looked like you actually pleased with that. That should be the nail on it. These areas could be a low, but when you drive, there is a noticeable change in elevation once you get to Joe Hustley.
All right, thank you very much.
Christie, uh, knowing the watershed, you did a study in this area, d- does this plan look like a reasonable plan to you, Director?
Yes, this basically, um, takes all the areas that, like Gary said, that are basically in that, uh, drainage basin that, that floods a lot and leaves them agricultural. The pink areas are all the highland, that matches exactly what the drainage study, uh, showed, you know, goes right along with that. We'll be out of that sub-basin that has a lot of flooding with this change.
All right. Thank you both Directors for your time, uh, for that. Um, a couple more things and, and I'll try to get out of the hair here. Uh, there's a demo on, uh, house that we approved demoing on Cedar Lake subdivision. Uh, Jerry has the, uh, owner of that property here today. I'd, I'd like for him to, uh, introduce Mr. Raul Romero, uh, just so he can tell the council what he plans to do, 'cause we did, uh, pass a, uh, I guess we had a hearing and, what's that?
Resolution.
A resolution, excuse me, that, uh, we were gonna demo that house, but, uh, he has acquired the house and he wanted to tell the council directly what he wants to do.
Well, Mr. Creel, send his three inspectors to check the house and they actually said that it's in really good shape on the, the, the structure is in really good shape. It was, how you say that? The past owner, mm, didn't take care of the house and the trees were ground, the, the yard and so it, it damaged some of the roof and it started leaking on the inside, that's why it was in bad shape. We, we already cleaned the house, we already pulled the permits and we're gonna get it fixed with, up to code.
You're gonna save the house? You're gonna spend some money-
Yeah.
-saving the house?
We already cleaned the whole house and it's looking good.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, on five thirty-sixth Road, Mr. Jemmerville says there's been some roadwork on the ditches and on the road itself. I'm just asking if, uh, there can be consideration of some rock, maybe a, a truckload of rock dump. Mr. Jemmerville said he'll, he'll clean up the area that's been damaged and uneven. If we would consider that, I'm just, uh, making a request, um, you know, y'all take that to where y'all wanna take that to, if you can. Um, so that, that concludes Ward Six. I'm just gonna, uh, spend a couple more minutes listing these next, uh, items. I've, I've kinda informally been adopted as the new councilman for Ward Seven. Uh, so I think I've got more calls in the last two weeks than I have in the last two months, uh, in my own ward, but I, I have been working with some of the residents on these issues and I just wanna list it for the administration. Uh, a service request for thirteen two fifty-three Hustley Road, this is Beth and Jeff Moran. Uh, they said they were promised some time ago that, uh, they would trench a ditch that, uh, is currently the ro- the, it, there is no ditch and it's level. Their house, uh, or property is level with the road, so the water, when it rains, just floods and inundates their, uh, their, uh, property. Um, I did talk to Public Works, they said they were committed to taking care of this after Mardi Gras and I just wanna make sure that we fulfill that commitment 'cause I did tell the, the Morans that that's the latest information that I have. Uh, Kimberly Duncan and Terry Wrench, uh, they had flooding and red clay intrusion along Jim Bird Road, uh, caused by Elliott Holmes Development. I understand it was a pipe that was, uh, stuffed with debris and, and red clay that caused the majority of that. I'm assuming that, uh, they've alleviated that and they're working hard to put that culvert in, 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 in a short period of time. Um, sinkholes at eight four three oh Louise Street. Um, I talked to, uh, engineering and they said a pipe has been ordered to replace underground broken ones with work to begin in a matter of days. Uh, Director Levitard, is, is that still the case? Is she here? Did she leave?
She stepped out.
Does anybody know if that's still the case, that that pipe is, uh, scheduled to go in on that road? If not, if y'all could follow up on that, I'd, I'd appreciate it. Heather Steins at thirteen three oh five North Sandy Creek Road was told concrete culverts were gonna be, uh, installed very soon and she was asking for a date 'cause she said she, the date that might happen because she's actually gonna relocate, uh, for a few weeks, if it's gonna be a few weeks or, or what have you. Uh, so she was asking for that. So, Di- Director, I was just asking about, uh, the replacement of, uh, broken pipes at eighty-four thirty Louise Street. Is that still on schedule to be done?
That is on schedule. I'll have to check where it is on the repair replace, but I'll, I'll, I'll check it. We're catching up to some of those things that have been on there for a while, some of the smaller stuff, so, um, I will. Oh, and actually, that's the one they're supposed to mobilize this week.
Okay.
Yes, is that the one we talked about last week?
Well, uh, eighty-four thirty, yeah, that's the one we, we talked about. And then thirteen three oh five North Sandy Creek, uh, they were told, uh, concrete culverts were gonna be installed soon, but they, they don't know of a date and if it's gonna be long, they're gonna actually relocate it out of their house 'cause they, they're bogging down with their cars and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah, and I'll have to check with Public Works on that 'cause I, I guess that's something they're doing, we're, we're not handling that. But Louise Street, I, I asked today, actually, and they are supposed to start showing up tomorrow on that.
And I got one last- And I got one last one, and I apologize to my colleagues on the council, but Dawn Ritchie, uh, she's requesting ditches in front of businesses on thirteen one fifty-five Shriners Boulevard. If they could do something with that, uh, if we can trench those ditches, because they, there, there's no ditches there, and again, it just goes into their business parking lots and all that kinda stuff. So if we can't have somebody inspect that area, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And that concludes my report.
All right, move on to public agenda, citizen comments. We got total of forty-five minutes allotted, each person gets three minutes each to speak. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone on my right, your left, that would like to get up and speak? Yes, ma'am. Make sure to sign in on the paper and state your name and address aloud for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. Um, I expect all of you feel the same way, that your house is your home, not just your house, that, that's the place where you are comfortable, relaxed, that's your place, and you expect to feel safe there. Well, I feel like that, too. And on Friday afternoon, I was out in my backyard with my children. My daughter walked into our shed, which is twenty feet from our backyard, and she pulled out, opened the shed, opened the door, walked in, she said, "Mom, look what's in here." She pulled out a loaf of bread, a can of tuna, a book, and two blankets. This was in my shed. This shed is inside a fenced backyard, thirty feet across from the street, um, which means someone was staying in there, um, walking thirty feet across my backyard, past my ba- past my back door, um, and just right by our house here, someone was sleeping in there. Well, one, I just imagine what would have happened if my kid had gone into their own backyard, had walked into their backyard and seen a stranger come out of that shed, and then my kid doesn't feel safe at their house. What happens if that person who's sleeping in my shed gets strung out on drugs one night, sees something weird in my house, thinks it's some weird thing, and breaks in without even trying to? What if they break in trying to, in search for drugs or anything else that they're trying to do, or to be, whatever it was? And three, like, I just can't imagine what it would be like if I had to make the choice of whether I was gonna live with killing somebody, because I didn't know what this person was doing on our property, and I had to be in charge of keeping my children safe. So I know that, um, we want our community to be safe, I know that you're aware of this problem, um, but I just feel like, what are we going to do? Are we going to figure out a way to solve this? Like, are we gonna be a community that honors the laws that we have? Surely there's a way to figure this out, with how many ordinances we have, how many state laws we have, there has to be a way to figure this out. So are we a community of law that honors the laws that we have and the safety of other people, or are we just not have the political will to do something about this? Do, are we too afraid to be called mean, or is it gonna have to wait till one of your backyards get, have people in it, and then we finally decide to do something? Thank you for your time.
Please state your name and address aloud.
Yes, my name is Natalie, and I live on Seal Avenue.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right, your left, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone in the back of the room? If not, citizens' comments are now closed. Moving on to the policy agenda, Ms. Kerry.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance to designate one forty-three Keller Avenue as Cinebaleksi landmark.
I'm moving.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tisdale. Since it's a first reading, we'll move on to Resolution B.
Resolution denying a request for a zoning map amendment for seventy-three parcels of land from agricultural and regional business to neighborhood business for properties along Old Highway sixty-seven.
I'd like to move this as a first reading, uh, with considerations as discussed earlier.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we're turning it into a first reading ordinance, and motion by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Tisdale, any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Demming.
Well, that's, that's the question, Peter.
Yeah.
When you, uh, you file an ordinance, before you have it, it's gotta be...
Yeah, I, I think it'd be better just to deny this and bring it back at the next meeting as a first meeting, a first reading.
That's great, um, I think that's accurate, however, don't we have posting requirements for ordinances? If we're gonna pass an ordinance, don't we have to post this for a certain amount of days? Does, isn't there a posting requirement and a public hearing requirement before you have the first reading? What, so do we have, do we, do we have it posted? Do you have to post for a resolution? What, what are the requirements for a resolution that are different than for an ordinance? Because I wanna make sure we, we, we apply the, the correct requirements for an ordinance. We can't just say because it was a resolution, it can now become an ordinance, because I don't think that's accurate. There's a different standard for ordinances that have to be applied.
Well, I mean, an ordinance, uh, for a, for a zoning change, I mean, I, I'm not clear, how did this originate? Did it originate as just a, asking the planning commission to review the zoning?
When we originally advertised this, uh, a year ago, and it came before the planning commission, we conducted a public hearing at that time and they chose to table it. Well, um, two or three months ago, the planning commission actually asked it to be brought back up. We were essentially wa- we were waiting for, um, Director Levitard, you know, to, uh, they wanted a presentation on the drainage up there and everything else, and she was good enough to come in and do that for us and answer their questions. So they made a motion to bring it back up, but we had committed to the neighbors that we would advertise it again when it came back up, and that's how the second public hearing was held, um, about two months ago.
Okay, so it was advertised?
It was advertised, yes.
Okay, that, that was my question.
Yes.
If, if all the requirements were met.
So just as if they would have approved it and it would've came for us for ratification, we could've denied it if they approved it. Peter, my question is, this comes to us in the form of a denial, can we reverse the denial and approve it? And, and put it on as a first reading?
You know, I, I don't, I don't really think that's necessary, because it's there, it's already before, we can, we can, uh, refuse the denial, and I would bring it back next week as a first hearing. Then you'd have a second here, a second reading as well, and it would be published at least on our agenda docket. And I was just reading the transcript, uh, you had Judge Steckler and Connie Rocco made presentations at the, uh, at the planning commission, and this would give them two more meetings or, in, in two, basically three more weeks to, uh, give any comment on those things.
All right, so deny the denial and table it, uh, for one week, or what, what do you recommend?
Uh, deny the denial and just bring it back next week as a first reading.
Yeah, you can do that, yes.
Bring it back in two weeks.
So go ahead and deny this one, is what you're saying? Deny this? Or table it?
We're denying the denial.
Yes.
But however, we're gonna bring this back for discussion, uh, in, in one week. And that gives, uh, interested parties the chance to review it and, uh, come here if they wanna address the council during that time they can.
Kenny.
Yes, sir.
You've been having none but a wall with this thing. You need to do it the right way. Deny, send it back, let them change all the stuff y'all wanna change it to, put it back on the table. That's what you do it the right way.
The only problem with that, we gotta go back and put these signs up again, and that, we've already went through all that. And, and I think, just as, just bear with me, just bear with me, as if, if we were gonna deny something the planning commission sent to us to approve, we're simply doing the same thing here in essence, but we're just, uh, we probably could vote on it today. We probably could deny the denial and say, we're gonna do that, but I think the prudent thing to do, like council suggested, uh, was to, let's, uh, deny the denial and table it, uh, we can then put a, table it, is that what we did?
You, you changing three things in this resolution. You're not just denying it, you changing three different things in this resolution, according to what Jerk said, limited business, agriculture, and AR.
Yeah.
I mean, so you, you redoing a whole thing. I mean, I'm just saying, you've had none but trouble with this thing for over a year. There's been a thorn in your side.
Kerry, the city council has the, has the right to reduce the intensity and the scope of anything that comes before, and that's essentially what y'all are doing. You're reducing the intensity and the scope.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny, do we have it second by Mr. Tisdale?
I, I don't have a motion to deny.
I mean, to approve the denial.
Y'all just moved and seconded it, and this is, would the resolution say deny? So what we're doing is approving the denial or reversing it.
I moved it for discussion.
Am I correct?
I moved it for discussion.
So now we at the voting point.
I, I moved it for discussion purposes only, so...
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the denial? Motion by Mr.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Guines, any more discussion?
I, I have discussion.
Hold on, hold on.
So it's already on the table?
As an ordinance. Well, let me, let me just comment on that, I think our, our lead clerk is right, because I did have a discussion with her, and she said it is appropriate. We don't have Roberts Rules of Order here, number one, it's majority rules, uh, with the council. So my suggestion was to change the resolution to an ordinance as a first reading, uh, and then we would, uh, come back in a second reading and make our suggestions on this. And I know Councilman Lawrence, it's a little unorthodox, but I, I don't think it is illegal, you know, for us to do this, so it's just my opinion.
Okay, so we got the motion for the change of the ordinance, and second by Mr. Tisdale, any more discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Demming.
I just think that we should follow as per council, I think we should approve the denial, bring it up next week for the first reading. I think that would be the most prudent thing coming from council. Um, I understand that there may be some, some belief that either way is functional, I would just prefer to take council's advice, uh, and not err and do anything wrong. I would prefer to make sure that we're doing everything absolutely right.
Not to, not to approve the denial, because if you approve the denial, then...
You denied it, it's dead. The motion would be to reverse the denial of the planning commission.
But then we're approving the resolution.
No.
But we do have the authority to reverse the denial.
There's always the third option in here to call for a public hearing regarding the whole thing, and maybe that's, that's the solution, the way to do it, is just to say, we're not approving it or denying it, we're not making any comment on it, we're gonna have a public hearing, and then we'll sort out what needs to be done.
Okay, um, do I need to withdraw my original motion to...
Well, maybe we just let it be voted down, whatever your motion was.
All right, my motion... What's that?
Are you gonna withdraw it?
I, I'll withdraw my, uh, original motion to, uh, adopt this as an ordinance.
I withdraw my second.
And I, I'd like to propose that, uh, we call for a public hearing, table this issue, and call for a public he- hearing on the matter. How long do we need to call for a public hearing?
Okay, Jer, you got that?
All right, we'll allow the clerk, uh, to propose a time, uh, when she can publish it, uh, you know, properly, but my proposal is that we table it and, uh, call for a public hearing on the matter.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Tisdale, any more discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Unanimous votes.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Resolution C.
Submove.
You gotta, she gotta read it first.
Resolution appointing Shante Shaw, War Chief Representative to the Buluxi Planning Commission.
Motion by Mr. Guines, seconded by me, any more discussion? All in favor? Unanimous votes? This brings us to the consent agenda, do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Anything you wanna discuss, Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Mr. Demming? Mr. Guines?
Uh, I'd like to, uh, just table for one week, I had one question from the administration, and I would like to keep that, uh, just table C to next, next meeting.
C?
Uh, C.
So we have a motion to take C off the table and table it?
Just for one week.
For one week, by Mr. Guines, any second?
Well, I'm, our next council meeting's actually two weeks from now.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Two weeks. So we have a second? February twentieth. Seconded by Mr. Demming, any more discussion? All in favor, to table. Okay, unanimous votes. All right, anything else you'd like to discuss, Mr. Guines?
That's it.
Mr. Lawrence?
On, uh, all these special events, is, is this just charges? Did we do this last year? Did we charge anything? We got a full special event thing on there. The craft beer thing, what you doing different than it was before?
I think with the craft beer, we, we are allowing that to be a special event, or one of our stadium days with the Shuckers, so we've always done a craft beer, uh, agreement. On the others, we're, uh, focusing on, in on the property rental that's going on across the street, that that is, uh, in place, and that will basically cover the requirements of a special event approval by the council, because they, they're supplying their insurance, they've met with the police, they've done their plan, they've done their site plan, and it's the same, uh, sort of procedure as if having the council to approve it.
So we, we have a fee, you charging them to rent the property?
Yes, sir, five, five hundred dollars for the stands and the lot across from City Hall, which is sort of the center of all that. All three organizations, uh, are good with that, they're fine with that, there aren't any other fees as far as the, uh, the larger special event fees, because one of the exceptions is if we're renting city property and have a separate agreement with...
You had the three of them, and all, all in this together?
Yes.
And it's one price? I mean, it's...
There's three resolutions, yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to get all that straight, just see what we're doing there. Are y'all satisfied with that? Do you think that's a good thing to do?
I think everybody's satisfied with that.
All right. Okay, that's it.
All right. All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous votes, anything that you need to accept? Mr. Glavine?
Nope.
Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Mr. Demming? Nope, all right. Moving on to code enforcement.
Item A on the agenda, Angie, uh, Angie N. Bailey Estate, six thirty-five Peyton Drive, we would ask for thirty days on that property.
Submove, second.
All right, motion by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Unanimous votes.
Item B, Matthew Hutchinson, one one four oh four Parker Circle, they're, they're working on that now, we would ask for thirty days on that property.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Unanimous vote.
Okay, item C, Evan Pham Lu, two forty-five Manaky Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item D, Signature Gulf, Gulf Coast Properties, two twenty-eight Rodenberg Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item E, Nathan L. Prescott, one forty-nine Rosetti Street, that case has been resolved. Item F, Margaret W. and Wilburn L. Maddox, one fifty-eight Beachview Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item G, Rogelio Martinez Garcia, seven sixty-four Highland Drive, this property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Rogelio Martinez Garcia at seven sixty-four Highland Drive? If not, this case is closed.
Item H, Mohammed Moeini Estate, four forty-three Brown Street, that case has been resolved. Item I, Robert H. Wilke, one three one nine oh Hudson Crown Road, that case has been resolved.
All right, do we have a motion on the... All right. Do we have a motion on the routine agenda?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Guines, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
He's in the back. Hope he brought a check with him. He's gonna have two million dollar check now.
Three point two eight six million.
Yeah, you got that one. How about that, three point three?
Thank you, council.
That's what we needed.
All right. All in favor of the routine agenda? Unanimous votes? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Seconded by everybody. All in favor?
I don't know.
Motion by Mr. Demming, seconded by everybody.
I made it, and Robert seconded.